Buenas tardes. Vamos a empezar con una audiencia pública para la evaluación del plan de planes de trabajo de vivienda justa. Muchas gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Sé que tienen un programa muy, muy ocupado, así que apreciamos que estén aquí hoy. Voy a dar un rápido calendario y cómo va la noche. Primero, mi nombre es Claudia Monterrosa y estoy en el departamento de inversión en vivienda y comunidad. Y están aquí para una audiencia pública sobre la evaluación del plan de trabajo de vivienda justa. Esta es una colaboración conjunta con la autoridad de vivienda de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Y hemos estado trabajando juntos durante varios meses para presentar al ciudadano su primera evaluación del plan de vivienda justa a través de HUD en principios de noviembre. La evaluación del plan de vivienda justa es una obligación de HUD para que la ciudad de Los Ángeles continúe recibiendo fondos públicos en forma de financiación de fórmula tales como City BG, Home, HAKLA y ESG. Estos son los objetivos que ayudan a financiar la desaparición, la producción de vivienda accesible, inversiones en comunidad y programas de desarrollo de comunidad, y también para ayudar a las personas con discapacidad. Hoy estamos aquí hasta las 8:00. Vamos a usar la primera mitad de hora para dar una revisión de lo que hemos estado trabajando. Espero que todos hayan visto el plan de trabajo. Tenemos un plan de 300 páginas, cerca de 300 páginas, junto con muchos anexos diferentes. Y ustedes van a escuchar básicamente acerca de los objetivos y estrategias, es decir, la necesidad real del plan. Así que vamos a analizar esos objetivos. Y también vamos a anunciar por primera vez las mapas reales que serán parte del trabajo. En el plan de trabajo tenemos mapas de ensayo, pero las que han visto se mostraron fuera de lado van a ser incluidas. Eso es solo un ejemplo, eso es solo un ejemplo de estas mapas. Así que sin tomar más tiempo, me gustaría introducir, bueno, también quiero reconocer que hemos contratado excelentes consultores para ayudarnos en la evaluación del plan de vivienda justa, Comités de Comunidad y Partners y el Comité de Derechos Civiles under law. Y tenemos a Diane Glover aquí y a Jared Elwell asistiendo a este proceso. Y Jared estará proporcionando esa revisión hoy. Tenemos aproximadamente 30 minutos y el resto de la reunión será dedicada a ustedes, a ustedes para proporcionar sus comentarios públicos. Y dependiendo del número de tarjetas y tarjetas de orador que hemos recibido, determinaremos el tiempo asignado, así que podría ser entre dos a cinco minutos por persona. Así que simplemente vamos a averiguar cuánto tiempo tenemos y dividiremos eso igual. Y todos los que han registrado una tarjeta de orador, cada uno ha sido numerado. Así que si no han registrado, por favor, vea a Kevin fuera. Y ahora procederemos a la audiencia. Jared, venga. Gracias.
Buenas noches a todos. Y primero quiero agradecer, a cargo del Comité de Derechos Civiles y de Comités de Comunidad, nos gustaría agradecer a HAKLA y a la ciudad de Los Ángeles por permitirnos colaborar con ellos en la primera evaluación de vivienda justa de la ciudad. Como Claudia mencionó, vamos a cubrir rápidamente el propósito de la ley de ampliación de la vivienda justa y luego iremos a las mapas y hablaremos de algunos objetivos y estrategias que la ciudad está considerando adoptar. Así que en general, la ley de ampliación de la vivienda justa fue adoptada por HUD en 2015 y es una ley de planificación de vivienda justa. Clarifica las obligaciones existentes para la vivienda justa que fueron incluidas en el Acto de la Vivienda Justa de 1968. Así que esto no es, las obligaciones no son nuevas, pero el proceso es nuevo. Se permite a las jurisdicciones locales establecer prioridades y objetivos de vivienda local. Así que esta no es una situación donde HUD está sentado en DC diciendo a la ciudad de Los Ángeles qué son sus problemas y cómo los corregir. La ciudad determina esas prioridades y objetivos. Una de las nuevas obligaciones de la ley de ampliación de la vivienda justa y, finalmente, la evaluación de la vivienda justa es que debe estar conectada a los procesos de planificación posteriores. Así que en el caso de la ciudad, las estrategias y objetivos que identifican deben estar vinculadas a su plan consolidado, que es donde la ciudad determina cómo va a usar su financiación de fórmula. Y la autoridad de vivienda debe incorporar esas estrategias y objetivos a su plan de 5 años PHA. Y estarán registrando el progreso en cada uno de esos planes en su plan de acción anual o plan anual. Setilla un marco para tomar acciones significativas para ampliar la vivienda justa. Y como mencioné, estarán registrando eso en sus planes anuales. Así que la primera mapa que vamos a ver es el mapa de índice de pobreza bajo. Mira la pobreza de la ciudad a nivel de vecindario a través de la ciudad y compara con la pobreza a nivel de vecindario a nivel nacional, mirando el promedio y el desplazamiento estándar. Pone cada vecindario o censura en una escala de uno a, de cero a cien, y en realidad inversa los números. Así que una puntuación de índice de pobreza alta significa que tienes baja exposición a la pobreza. Así que este es el slide más contraintuitivo que compartiré con ustedes esta noche. La segunda mapa que estamos viendo es datos de complainte de derecho a vivienda. Así que la ciudad contrata con el Centro de Derechos de la vivienda para gestionar una línea de llamadas para complaints de vivienda justa. Esto es para ver los datos de 2015. Hubo más de 10,000 complaints en toda la ciudad. Es un mapa de calor, así que puede ver la concentración en la parte central de la ciudad. La siguiente mapa que estamos viendo es los datos de la ley de evicione LS. La ley LS prohibe a las jurisdicciones locales restribir el derecho de los dueños de la propiedad, propiedad rental, del mercado. De nuevo, este es un mapa de calor, así que cuanto más oscuro el color, más eviciones de la ley LS hay en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. La siguiente mapa que estamos viendo es los datos de la salud y viviendas limpias. Así que H-City gobierna un programa de remedio de led, ofreciendo grante a los dueños de la casa para asegurar que sus casas sean seguras de led. Y la salud es remediar condiciones inseguras. De nuevo, puede ver la distribución como un mapa de calor, ver la distribución de esos programas centrados en la parte central de la ciudad. Programa de préstamos de segundo sueldo y certificado de crédito de hipoteca. Ahora, el programa de préstamos de segundo sueldo proporciona asistencia a familias de baja ingreso que buscan comprar casas en forma de asistencia de pago de descuento, asistencia de costos de cierre o asistencia de adquisición. Y el programa de certificado de crédito de hipoteca es un programa de crédito de ingreso Mirando las ordenanzas de estabilización de la renta, propiedades distribuidas a través de la ciudad. Las ordenanzas de estabilización de la renta fueron diseñadas para proteger a los dueños de incrementos excesivos de la renta a través de la ciudad. Y si miran las propiedades de estabilización de la renta, propiedades distribuidas a través de la ciudad y comparan eso junto con los datos de la ley LS, verán bastante un espejo. Ahora estamos overlapando el índice de pobreza bajo con propiedades a riesgo. Así que nuevamente, el índice de pobreza bajo, cuanto más oscuro el color, menos exposición a la pobreza. Las propiedades a riesgo son indicadas por los círculos. Estas son propiedades que están a riesgo de perder su coveniente de disponibilidad dentro de los próximos cinco años. Y puede ver que la mayoría de esas propiedades están en los colores más claros, lo que significa que esas son áreas con la mayor exposición a la pobreza. Propiedades de trust fund de vivienda accesible. Creo que este es uno de los slides más relatos en la presentación. El trust fund de vivienda accesible desarrolla y rehabilita la vivienda para las personas de baja ingreso. Y overlapedo con el índice de pobreza bajo, puede ver que el desarrollo de la vivienda a través del programa de trust fund de vivienda accesible ha citado esos proyectos casi exclusivamente en áreas que tienen alta exposición a la pobreza. Recipientes de voto de la vivienda, la distribución de esos, los voto de la vivienda a través de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Puede ver grandes salas de la ciudad que no tienen recibidores de voto de la vivienda viviendo en ellas. Y ahora vamos a hablar un poco sobre los factores contribuyentes. Así que HUD requiere que las ciudades miren las cuestiones de vivienda justa y identifiquen qué contribuye a esas cuestiones de vivienda justa, qué crea y contribuye a la perpetuación o aumento de la severidad de esas cuestiones de vivienda justa. Han señalado algunos de ellos con algunos datos de apoyo. Así que la pérdida de vivienda accesible en la ciudad. Dos tercios de todas las casas en la ciudad de Los Ángeles son abusivas, lo que significa que están pagando más del 30% de su ingreso hacia sus costos de vivienda. Puede ver que hay más de casi 12,000 unidades de vivienda accesible a riesgo de conversión en los próximos cinco años. Así que la pérdida de vivienda accesible es un factor contribuyente significativo para la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Complementando eso es la desplazamiento de los residentes debido a presiones económicas. Puede ver que las comunidades de color son vulnerables a la desplazamiento. Estamos viendo décadas de insuficiente producción de vivienda. No ha mantenido la necesidad. Y, por lo tanto, estamos viendo un desplazamiento significativo en lugares como Echo Park, Curia Town y Mid-City. Lacking de acceso a la oportunidad debido a los altos costos de vivienda. Así que estamos viendo familias mayores y personas con discapacidad que están cada vez siendo segregados a través de la ciudad. Residentes ahorros pagan suficientemente sufren viajes más largos debido a los excesivos costos de vivienda en la ciudad. Y la citación de no sólo el programa LITAC, programa de crédito de vivienda a base de impuestos, pero las propiedades de trust fund de vivienda accesible están siendo citadas en áreas con menos recursos. También estamos viendo impedimentos a la movilidad como un factor contribuyente significativo. El Acto de Empleo y vivienda justa de California define la fuente de ingresos para incluir o excluir voto de la vivienda. Así que los dueños del voto de la vivienda son denegados la oportunidad de vivir en áreas más integradas y áreas con más recursos y mayor oportunidad porque no están protegidos bajo la protección de la fuente de ingresos de nivel estatal. Y luego la ubicación de vivienda pública. Hemos visto y hablaremos de recuerdos un poco más tarde, menos del 10% de la población de toda la ciudad vive en recuerdos, pero más del 58% de la vivienda de las autoridades públicas está ubicada en esos recuerdos. Y un recuerdor es una área racial y/o etnica concentrada de pobreza. Así que está definido a nivel de censura. Si una censura tiene una población no blanca superando el 50% y un ratio de pobreza superando el 40%, es cualificado como una área racial y/o etnica concentrada de pobreza. Cuando HUD lanzó la ley de ampliación de la vivienda justa, estudió la importancia del enfoque equilibrado y la ciudad de Los Ángeles ha abrazado eso con todo el corazón. Hay dos prongas al enfoque equilibrado. Uno es estrategias basadas en lugares, que pueden incluir hacer inversiones en las comunidades de pobreza alta segregada, mantener y preservar la vivienda accesible existente, stock de alquiler, incluido HUD's assisted housing en áreas que pueden estar transitiendo. Estrategias de movilidad son el otro prongo. Y esos son esencialmente abriendo áreas de la ciudad que históricamente excluían a personas de color y personas de baja ingreso, personas con discapacidad, de vivir en esas Así que rápidamente, pasando por los objetivos y estrategias del trabajo, quiero decir que cuando el trabajo fue lanzado a mediados de agosto, a mediados de agosto, hubo cinco objetivos que fueron lanzados y tenían estrategias correspondientes. Y para el propósito de esta noche, hemos etiquetado si cada una de estas estrategias es basada en lugares o cualifica como ambas. Así que en esta presentación, porque fue lo que fue lanzado hace un mes, tenemos cinco Uno de los propósitos de esta noche es mostrarles todos estos objetivos y estrategias, recibir información de ustedes. Estos objetivos y estrategias serán modificados y editados en función del feedback que recibimos de ustedes todas las noches, pero también a través del periodo de publica, que cierne el 29 de septiembre. Así que es importante que escuchemos de ustedes esta noche, pero también que escuchemos de ustedes en escritura. Así que el primer objetivo que la ciudad ha identificado como su problema principal es aumentar el stock de vivienda accesible a través de la ciudad, particularmente en las comunidades de oportunidad. Y puede ver que hay varias estrategias listadas a la derecha. Y voy a pasar rápidamente por estos objetivos. Estos están todos en el trabajo público que fue lanzado hace un mes. El segundo objetivo que la ciudad ha identificado es la preservación del stock existente de vivienda accesible con algunas estrategias correspondientes, incluyendo la mejora del monitorismo activo de la vivienda accesible a riesgo de convertirse en rentas de mercado. El tercer objetivo que la ciudad ha identificado es prevenir el desplazamiento de residentes de baja e moderada. Muchas ciudades en todo el país están experimentando gentrificación y desplazamiento. Los Ángeles está bien sabiendo de esos problemas y sus problemas en la ciudad y está comprometido con abordarlos. El cuarto objetivo en la presentación es asegurar acceso igual a la vivienda para personas con características protegidas, residentes de baja ingreso y desaparecidos, así como personas con discapacidad. Y el último objetivo en el trabajo público que ha sido lanzado es expandir el acceso a la oportunidad para clases protegidas. Puede ver varios de ellos, incluyendo la orientación de los recursos de desarrollo de la fuerza y recuerdos para mejorar la movilidad económica. Y en este último slide de los objetivos y estrategias, puede ver el enfoque equilibrado que la ciudad está embarcando. Así que aquí está el calendario de evaluación de vivienda justa de LA. A mediados de agosto fue lanzado, el trabajo fue lanzado a la audiencia pública. En unos pocos semanas, un trabajo revisado vendrá antes del comité de vivienda, así como el periodo de publica terminará el 29 de septiembre. En octubre, habrá una segunda audiencia del comité de vivienda. La última evaluación de la vivienda justa irá antes del consejo municipal para la aprobación. Y la última evaluación de la vivienda justa también irá antes del Consejo de Comisiones de HAKLA para la aprobación. Y en principios de noviembre, el plan es para que la ciudad presente su plan de aprobación a HUD. Y HUD tiene 60 días para revisar y aceptar ese plan. Bien, así que estamos esperando a Claudia para darnos saber cuántos personas han firmado y cuántos minutos cada orador tendrá.
Correcto, así que tenemos aproximadamente 17 tarjetas de orador. Todos han registrado una tarjeta de orador. Si no lo tienen, podemos traerte una tarjeta de orador y ustedes pueden registrarla. Así que podemos, voy a buscar las tarjetas de orador y las descartar. Y ustedes tendrán un micrófono aquí a este lado. Si necesitan asistencia para la traducción, o tal vez ustedes... Así que tenemos aproximadamente 17 tarjetas de orador y tenemos aproximadamente 90 minutos de tiempo. Tienen que estar aquí a las 8:00. Así que hay dos, cuatro minutos cada persona porque hay otras personas que se sumergen también. Voy a buscar las tarjetas de orador y hay un micrófono allí. Si necesitan servicios de traducción, podrán hablar en español y luego alguien podrá traducir para ustedes.
Así que el primer orador es Teri J. ¿Está Teri en la sala? Bien. Claudia, ¿quién está manteniendo el tiempo?
Nancy está manteniendo el tiempo.
Bien.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Teri J. Soy una especialista en servicios de atención de pacientes. Trabajo con EDA, obviamente, que es el equipo específico de atención de pacientes aquí en el área de la zona del centro. Muchas gracias por proporcionar este trabajo de 300 páginas a la comunidad. Mucha información, mucha información que se divide en demográfica y representativas a través de la zona. Sé que hay 300. Lo que es importante para la comunidad es que, para mi preocupación, como miembro trans de la comunidad trans, mi preocupación es que entre los 300 páginas, página 6, página 10, página 11, página 75, página 98, página 137, página 294 y página 296, una página para cada uno de ellos, al menos tiene menos de una parágrafo que destaca los problemas de vivienda y soluciones para los miembros de la comunidad trans. No destaca o no elabora el acceso igual a la vivienda para la comunidad trans. También estoy mirando página 25, página 195, página 225. Y de la 75, página 75, 98, hay un parágrafo repetido. Mi preocupación es que, a partir de la lectura académica en este trabajo, sería mejor realmente incluir, elaborar el parágrafo en mucho más largo, realmente informar al público cuando se trata de acceso igual a la vivienda para la comunidad trans, así como página 195 y 225, hay un parágrafo, es un parágrafo repetido. Creo que uno de los aspectos más importantes es cuando un parágrafo repetido habla sobre discriminación, realmente no comparte mucho. Si continuábamos elaborando más sobre eso, eso sería muy útil. Qué obstáculos de discriminación cuando se trata de individuos trans no accediendo a la vivienda cuando se trata de discriminación por dueños, de administradores, de desarrolladores y otras personas involucradas con la vivienda, así como cuando se dice 225, cuando habla sobre la violencia masiva o el desestimado violencia. Esos números que se dedican a la ciudad, al menos 425,000 dólares se dedican a las víctimas de la violencia masiva. Y creo que lo más importante es cuánto de esos números pueden ser dedicados específicamente para individuos trans que participan en esta categoría, o, sea, y que están buscando venderse a la violencia masiva. Así que lo más importante es que, ya saben, realmente comparten más sobre eso. Y en el futuro, para el próximo, entre ahora y para el próximo encuentro de vivienda justa. Y creo que es realmente importante realmente conocer a individuos que son líderes trans en la comunidad, así como trans y también los participantes trans, los comisioneros. Así que creo que es realmente importante realmente traer a individuos que tienen información importante, realmente como si se distribuiera el lenguaje en este trabajo aquí. Así que creo que para mí como miembro, realmente no obtengo mucho de estos 300 páginas. Realmente no hay nada en la vivienda trans y trans, y cuánto de esos números están siendo desorganizados porque hay trans, hombres y mujeres que están juntados en todo esto para hombres y mujeres. Así que creo que lo más importante es traer a otros líderes trans a este trabajo.
El siguiente orador en la lista...
Ahorita vamos a estar checando los audífonos. Por favor, ponlo en el canal C con la letra C y suba el volumen, por favor. Así que vamos a esperar un poco porque estamos teniendo algunas dificultades tenenciales con la traducción audio. También para aquellos de ustedes en el webcast, si han escrito preguntas o comentarios, los tomaremos, básicamente no vamos a responderles, pero recolectaremos esa información, así que por favor, tengan libre de enviar sus comentarios escritos a través del webcast. Creo que tenemos aproximadamente 20 personas ahora mismo, también visitando la audiencia de la ciudad.
Así que el número siete está desaparecido.
Oh, dijo que esa persona...
Bien, el siguiente orador es Luis Cabalanes.
Muchas gracias. Buenas tardes, damas y caballeros. Mi nombre es Luis Cabalanes. Soy director ejecutivo de Inquilinos Unidos. Inquilinos Unidos es una organización no profana con más de 38 años de trabajo con familias de baja ingreso en el área de la Unión de la Puebla. Inquilinos Unidos recibe aproximadamente más de 4,000 familias cada año que buscan nuestro oficio para ayuda con eviciones ilegales o con problemas con la vivienda, más probablemente en viviendas de baja ingreso. Una gran porcentaje de las personas que vienen a nuestro oficio son, más probablemente, personas que a veces enfrentan la realidad de poner comida en la mesa para sus familias o pagar la renta. La mayor mayoría, sin embargo, son familias de baja ingreso, de clase trabajadora, que están siendo evitadas porque el dueño quiere traer nuevos habitantes que pueden pagar más renta. Es una realidad. La vemos todos los días, si el apartamento o el edificio o la casa está protegida por protección de renta, zonas de inmunes o no. La mayoría, la mayor mayoría de las personas que vienen a nuestro oficio están siendo evitadas por esta razón. Aproximadamente el 80% de las personas que vienen a Inquilinos Unidos son mujeres. El 20% a 25% son ciudadanos sénior. He tenido llamadas de personas mayores que están siendo amenazadas, literalmente, su dueño ha entrado en su propiedad para cortar la electricidad, así que dejan la propiedad, que están siendo amenazados con el agua cortada si no dejan la propiedad. Desde noviembre de last año, Inquilinos Unidos ha visto un aumento en el número de familias que están siendo amenazadas con hielo si no dejan la propiedad. Son familias trabajadoras, cuestión de pago de impuestos, que pueden ser indocumentadas, pero el dueño los encuentra más fáciles de deshacer si están amenazados con hielo y deportación. Es una realidad que vemos cada día, todos los días, sobre y sobre y sobre. Piensen en ello. Más de 4,000 personas a nivel anual. Estos no son miles de personas, más de 3,000 personas que vemos a través de otros eventos, entre los workshops, presentaciones o a través del programa. Vemos a estas personas todos los días. Estamos contentos de que estén trabajando para desarrollar este trabajo. Pero este trabajo necesita ser aportado. Tiene que abordar muchos problemas que no es ignorable. No incluido en el trabajo es el derecho a cancelar. El 99% de las personas que tienen que ir al tribunal... 99% of the people who have to go to court because of an eviction lose the lawsuit and get evicted. The city needs to work on that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Luis. The next speaker is Nisha Bias.
My name is Nisha Bias, and I'm with Public Council. We're part of the Housing Justice Coalition, which is a coalition of 18-plus organizations comprised of organizers, community members, advocates, and legal services providers. Over the past eight months, we've worked to develop some shared policy priorities to bring to HZ de la Pacla, which were submitted, and we're happy to see many of these priorities in the AFH draft. But tonight, we ask the city to push itself further, to commit to meaningful actions. My community partners will address these in greater detail, and they are on the handout that was provided to the city staff here. Our city was shaped in significant part by a legacy of federal, state, and local policies defined separately and create inequity on the basis of race, color, national origin, and other characteristics. Undoing these policies is not simply a matter of repealing these discriminatory laws that gave rise to segregation and inequity. We see that inequity persists despite the repeal of these laws, as the draft AFH details. The inequity is in affordability crisis, it's in gentrification and displacement of our communities, and we can commit exclusionary zoning in high opportunity areas. The city must take affirmative steps and actively address inequity head-on. This assessment is not intended to be limited by what the city can do at this particular political moment, but it should acknowledge what the city needs to do to make equity and access a reality for all mentally ill. We call on the city to strengthen its goals and the corresponding strategies, and we suggested how to do so in the handout that we have provided. Thank you.
Next up, Natasha Reyes.
Hi, my name is Natasha Reyes, and I'm with the Disability Rights California. We are also part of, and we fully support, the Coalition of Organizers and Advocates for Housing Justice. We support the coalition's seven priorities, and also specifically on barriers for people with disabilities. First, I'd like to say that we are very excited to hear that Section 8 waiting list is going to open in October of this year, but the online process actually creates barriers for low-income people without access to the internet, and for people with disabilities. These are exactly the communities that the mandate to affirmatively further fair housing is designed to address. And we also understand that all applicants must have an email address. We ask that PACLA work to stop rather than create these kinds of barriers, exactly the type of barriers that this assessment is designed to reduce. We also support the coordinated entry system insofar as it prioritizes people with greatest needs for housing source resources. However, the assessment must acknowledge that the system presents barriers for people with disabilities who cannot share the detailed information required to enter the system and obtain critical housing and services. Finally, I'd like to talk about reasonable accommodations through PACLA. Before threatening to terminate assistance to tenants with disabilities, PACLA should determine whether a reasonable accommodation can correct the cause of termination. This is an essential step towards preventing the loss of housing, especially for people with disabilities who already have an incredibly difficult time finding not only affordable housing, but housing that is accessible and has features of same needs because of their disabilities. We thank you very much for considering our comments, and would like to acknowledge that the priorities on the handout for the coalition are just seven out of the 20 or so that we submitted, and we will submit written comments to explain each of our priorities. Thank you. Do you want to link up with the seven priorities?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angelina Jimenez.
My name is Angelina Jimenez.
It's Angelina here. Yes.
Mi nombre es Angelina Jimenez, miembro de ACE.
My name is Angelina Jimenez, and I am a member of ACE.
Yo solamente vengo aquí a contar una breve historia, tal vez triste, pero voy a ser breve. Conozco una señora que siempre vamos a la iglesia.
I'm here to tell you a story, and it's a little bit sad. This person attends my church.
Este fin de semana que pasó, yo no le encontré, y pregunto por ella, y me dicen que se tuvo que ir.
It's because we can, I asked for her, and somebody told me that she had to leave.
Ella está muy grande de edad, y ya casi no podía trabajar, mucho menos pagar su renta.
She's an elderly, and she can work, and she cannot even pay her rent as well.
El lugar donde ella vivía era la casa de su hijo, pero ella, él le exigía a ella que tenía que pagarle dinero de la renta.
She lived at her son's house, and she was supposed to pay $500 rent.
Le dijo que lo necesitaba, y que si no, se tenía que ir porque él necesitaba. Mete a otra persona para que le diera ese dinero.
She was asked to leave the house because he needed those $500, and she couldn't afford to pay that.
Es por eso que pienso, que necesitamos vivienda económica para todas estas personas, sobre todo, ya voy en ese camino, que ya voy a necesitar, pero también vivienda, y no sé si voy a caber o te viro.
This is the reason why we need affordable housing. I'm heading that way, and I don't know if I'm gonna need housing in the future, or be able to afford housing in the future.
No quiero que me pase lo que la señora llama Tomasita, la señora. Se fue a México, y en México, la agarró de temblor de Oaxaca.
I don't want this to happen to me as it happens to Tomasita. She went back to Mexico, and she experienced the earthquake there, in Oaxaca.
Ella es del pueblo donde hubo mucho de alumbre, y la casa de que era de su mamá también se cayó. Ahora no tiene vivienda ni el metro.
She experienced the utmost part of the earthquake, and she was at her mom's house, and her mom's house also collapsed, and she doesn't have a place to live now.
Es por eso que hay que concertizar a la gente, para que luchemos por vivienda económica, no nos maldomos y confiemos derecho a vivienda.
I am here to advocate for everybody. Low-income people also need a place to be, not only the no class.
Por favor, luchemos. Gracias.
Please just find somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Sofia Martinez.
Mi nombre es Sofia Martinez. Good night, my name is Sofia Martinez. Estoy con la organización ACE. I'm here with the organization ACE. También estamos apoyando las siete prioridades identificadas por la coalición de organizadores y activistas para la justicia en la vivienda. We're also here to advocate and support the seven priorities identified by the Coalition of Organizers and Advocates for Housing Justice. Voy a hablar un poquito de mi situación. El dueño me rentó una casa de tres recamas, baile, cocina, y sala. Él me está cobrando la sala por 200 dólares, y todo el tiempo nos está costando que le tenemos que pagar la sala. Él se molesto porque él dice que tengo muchas visitas, que estoy usando a todas horas la sala, que la sala no puede estar la luz prendida a las 10, 11 de la noche.
I rented a house, it's a pre-adjunct house, and I, the owner of the house, who like, for me to pay $200 for the living room. He doesn't want any lights on after 10 o'clock, and he says that I also have a lot of visitors there, so he's gonna charge me $200 more for rent.
Me ha reducido un cuarto. Me ha quitado un cuarto más bien. Vive su empleo ahí. Entonces, este, yo no lo puedo pagar 200 dólares más de la sala, que lo uso.
He took away the, brought one of the rooms in the house, and he gave it to one of his employees, and now he wants me to pay those $200 on top of taking away one of the rooms.
Por esto, necesitamos una vivienda económica justa para las personas de los grupos como yo, o como todas las personas que siempre tendrán la misma situación que yo.
And that's why I'm here to advocate for low-income people to have affordable housing, like me, and other people that are experiencing the same situation.
Ya que no podemos seguir con ese costo contra los dueños.
We cannot be undergoing under this harassment from property owners. Gracias. Thank you.
The next speaker of the evening is Odilia Mendez.
My name is Odilia Mendez, and I'm with ACE, the Alliance of Californians for Community Encarment. I support the seven priorities identified by the Coalition of Organizers and Advocates for Housing Justice, and I'm specifically going to talk about my current situation right now. I'm 21, and I live with my mom and my brother. They used to be, my father in the house, but I was just less three. And we've been living there since I was five, so it's been a long time now. And we've had a change of landlord, just like once or five, and the current landlord that we have now, we've had to keep him with us for a couple of years, has never actually done any changes to our house, in terms of remodels. We have to basically force him to patch up basically what's wrong with the house. I'm one of the two other tenants in the property that have stayed there for longest, so every other unit has been remodeled, and there's always been new tenants that get charged twice as much as the rent, and they don't even take it for the long, every time someone moves out, they remodel it and charge even more. The cases that, for myself, my family, and the other tenants that's been there longer, we haven't had any kind of remodeling. It's just patch jobs, like patching floors, or patching up the walls when there's like rain that's coming through the ceiling, or like changing the roof, or we basically had to, you know, change buttons because it was forced upon by the city, which seems to have to be forced on them to do, and if we ask them, he takes some time. And the thing is, right now, with my mom just currently working part-time, they've taken another day away from her job, so she has like six days she works in the two weeks that we're paid, and then I'm studying, and my brother's still studying, we have to juggle what we pay for rent, and if it wasn't because we have so much time, so many years to be there, we wouldn't have a place to stay. So we're actually just looking into finding another place that, you know, is a little bit more open for us and is more accessible, but it's also hard because when you apply for affordable housing, you have to meet certain requirements, and it's like, who's to say that my family are going to need the needs? What if my mom's not making enough money, and like, you know, we have to get more jobs just to make us meet as we're doing now? I mean, I'm in support of having affordable housing, so that anyone who isn't need, whether you're disabled, trans, you know, low income, or, you know, even undocumented, you have an opportunity to have a house, because we all have that basic right. We need to have a house.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Pacheco.
Mi nombre es Maria Pacheco. Yo vivo en el 130 Sulos por la Avenida. Pertenezco a la asociación de, a la organización ACE. También estamos apoyando las siete prioridades identificadas por la coalición de organizadores y activistas para la justicia en la vivienda.
My name is Maria Pacheco, and I'm here as well to support the seven priorities and eight priorities of the coalition. I live in the local area.
Mi problema es ligar a las demás personas por la vivienda, y yo pienso que necesitamos vivienda económica, porque mi problema donde yo vivo no es visible, y por eso nadie me quiere ayudar. El dueño me ha dicho que me salga, me dio una carta, que yo tengo casi que desatarlo, pero a mi edad yo tengo 72 años, trabajo todavía para pagar mis recibos, mi comida, y no tengo quien me ayude, entonces yo tengo casi 50 años viviendo en este país. Nunca he pedido ayuda para nadie, ahora lo he pedido este, por favor, si alguien nos puede ayudar para que me vivienda, no solo a mi sino a todas las personas del color que seamos, necesitamos vivienda a mejor precio.
I am 72 years old, and I work to pay my rent and bills. I was recently asked to leave the property, and I've been here in the country for about 50 years. I'm here, I'm pleading for low-income families, families, and for myself as well. And I have never asked for help before.
Sí, ahora mi problema de vivienda no es como el web, no es visible, porque son las cañerías, los establos que están muy malos, y cada vez que alguien va al baño es como si en mi casa tuviera saliendo lo de la sanitaria.
So my problem is not very visible. We have a plumbing problem, and every time somebody uses the toilet, it looks like it's coming out of my place. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Emma Montellano.
Mi nombre es Emma Montellano, y yo pertenezco a la organización ACE. Este, a pedir, a decirles algo que está pasando, hay un viejo departamento que dijo en mala condición, que el dueño está estado ahí durando a los abellos, y ahorita lo que está pasando que mi vecino, hoy en día, este, hace como un mes y medio lo movieron porque el apartamento no era, y lo movieron al departamento de pios, y su esposa es una de... Y su esposa, su de, de, de los riñones, le han, o sea que le, ella es un producto bastante, pero por medio de toda la que le han puesto, ella ve si se pone mal y, y el apartamento está viviendo en malas condiciones, y el otro que tiene al apartamento que, donde lo movieron, nunca se la regaló, y el daño ha sido innalado, que le arregle el dueño el apartamento. Entonces, este, por lo que queremos, que, queremos que los dueños de esos, esos apartamentos tengan en buenas condiciones el apartamento que tienen. Yo también tengo un hijo con diferentes facilidades, y pues también ha pasado también con ese problema con la, con lo negada del apartamento, y, y este, pues intentaba arreglar, pero lo más estoy esperando a ver qué, a ver la cultura que han puesto, a ver si es cierto que esto va a borrar la unidad, porque lo que pasa es que, parece que está arreglando otra vez, y pues uno no puede estar así, en esa posición, en este, es muy mal que los dueños a veces ignoren a uno y no arreglen las cosas.
From here, I live in an apartment complex, and the owner has been ignoring a lot of the pre-房间 requests that has been done, reported to him. Our apartment has a lot of humidity and this doesn't make life easy. My brother moved, was asked to move to another apartment for the same reason, they were experiencing a lot of humidity and cold, and my sister-in-law had been sick, and she gets worse. They fixed his problem by just painting the walls, but the humidity is returned, so the owner of the property has been ignoring all these requests, and it's not making my life easy either, because I have a disabled kid, and we are experiencing the same situation of humidity in the apartments. My apologies, it's not my brother, it's my neighbor.
Ah, lo que pasa que, este, el apartamento, que tenía dado un poquito más grande, hoy no está viviendo él, es que el apartamento no tenía suficiente espacio para tener sus cosas, y la situación, ¿por qué no nos movemos? Porque no pueden pagar ventas más, más altas, aja. El, los costos son muy caras, ahorita las rentas, y luego les movieron.
My neighbor was moved to a smaller apartment. He used to have a small, a bigger apartment, and now he's experiencing problems with space, and we cannot afford to move to another apartment, because rent is expensive at this moment.
Y él ahorita, él ahorita está esperando que regrese el apartamento que tenía anteriormente, pero lo que pasa que el apartamento está bien escrito, le han quitado las paredes para que tenga regalas, y nunca la regalaron, y él está esperando que regrese el apartamento, porque, bueno, mi, su vecina, su esposa está, está muy enferma y no puede estar en ese apartamento, en el apartamento de los.
So my neighbor is waiting to have his apartment, apartment returned, because his wife is sick, and at this moment, all they have done is they have taken down the walls and reforced having that.
Okay. Ya? Gracias. Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Shor.
Hi, good evening. I'm the statewide campaign director for the grassroots community organization ACE, the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. We have a membership base of over twelve thousand low-income folks, mostly African-American Latino, who are coming together in their communities and fighting for their communities and their rights. We have been very involved in the coalition that people have been referencing, and I'm just gonna go straight to a few of the, no, first I'm gonna make a gentle comment, actually. We really urge HACLA and ACE to look at this plan as, think about where do we need to be as a city over the next five years? This should not be a plan based on what we think maybe we can do right now, or politicians will let us do. People have, people who developed this plan have had the opportunity to look at all the data, all the impediments, all the challenges, listen to our community members, but now it's up to you to help our elected officials understand what we really need if we're gonna get to fair housing in this city. So it needs to be aspirational, it needs to be bold, and it needs to really try to get out of that housing crisis that we have right now. Desperately, we need right to counsel. Tenants are forced to represent themselves against landlord lawyers, and they lose almost every time, even when, even though they very often have a strong case and ought to be able to sit. So then there's a way to do right to counsel that is not extremely, and so we need a right to counsel provision, and then we need the city to fund lawyers. And there is a way to do this where for the very poor and indigent, it's free and then sliding scale for low and moderate income folks, we need to do it. In the plan, it talks about how criminalizing homeless folks is a problem when it comes to fair housing and housing opportunity, and yet the plan has zero plan. It doesn't say therefore what the city or HACLA will do. We think HACLA, the city in the plan, should advocate that the city should repeal any laws that criminalize sleeping, sitting, or standing in public space, or limit someone's ability to sleep in their car, and should stop prohibiting disruption of, I mean, should prohibit disruption of people's property. Mandatory inclusionary zoning, so there, well, why don't we go to linkage fee first? The plan talks about linkage fee, good, really, it should, there was a commission study that said what was economically feasible. So again, don't worry about the politicians yet, we'll worry about them. What you need to do based on all your solid data and information and analyses, listening to our communities, is saying that the city would be wise to adopt it at its, the level deemed economically feasible by the study that people spent money and time doing. Mandatory inclusionary zoning, going beyond linkage fee. We are never gonna be able to fund, governance funding, no time soon is gonna develop the amount of affordable housing we need. We need developers to do their fair share, they're making a lot of money, they need to contribute to solving the crisis. We need mandatory inclusionary zoning now for homes being built, new development, and we need mandatory inclusionary zoning for rental units once eighty fifteen oh five passes, which it should pass tomorrow. The last thing I'll mention is source of income protection for Section Eight. We're giving people Section Eight vouchers, and they're turning them back in because they cannot find somebody who will rent to them. This is insane, and it's gonna be hard to solve, but one step is to pass a local law like Santa Monica has, and part of San Jose, Santa Fe County has, that prohibits discrimination based on source of income, whereas the source of income is Section Eight. So I will just wrap by saying, our city won't look the same in ten years if we don't take these actions now. Maybe some folks are okay with that, maybe they want the city to look different, but we're saying, folks, Latin brand folks particularly, living in La Coruña, working-class folks are being displaced right and left every day, pushed away from their communities, away from their families often, away from their jobs, away from social services, and we have an obligation to act and to stop it. Thank you.
I am definitely gonna have trouble with this next one. Is it Xia? Xia.
Hello, my name is Xia Aliz. I work, I'm a reentry counselor with the Center for Health Justice. I have been a chronicity homeless most of my adult life, and I was here to advocate along with the transgender community, but the growing gender non-binary, non-conforming community that would require gender neutral spaces and gender neutral tolerancing to further advance the inclusion of said population. I've been, I've received many, I've received many recommendations from landlords and owners who do not, who recommend certain types of adjustments to different places I've lived based off of gender, and what they expect of women or the LGBT QY2S community. And I've received parking violations, keeping it apart. These are, these are one of many issues that the gender non-conforming and non-binary face every day, and I would like to see more conversations with those that have.
Our next speaker is Leslie Isay Peze.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank those who made all the effort to creating this plan, and I just wanted to say that I strongly advocate for the use of publicly owned land for affordable housing for those who are eighty percent area meter income and below, and to give priority to individuals that are thirty percent area meter income and below. I also appreciate that community land trusts are being considered in the plan, but are re-explored, and I strongly advocate that community land trusts play a very crucial role in decreasing, maintaining, and preserving affordable housing in perpetuity. I personally don't understand co-located housing and the fact that it expires eventually and goes back into speculative market, I don't think, that doesn't make sense to me. And so I advocate for housing that is permanently affordable, and I feel that community land trusts do exactly that. If you lift other community land trusts, it will stay really affordable forever. So I encourage that we move on, on that path, and that in this present time, with the average properties, the co-located housing that is in danger, going into speculative market, that community land trusts are being used to take that back in and make sure it stays accessible to those who need affordable housing. I hope more now may show with written comments, like, yes, essentially, made for COOT.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joel Marrero.
Good afternoon. My name is Joel Marrero. I'm the attorney of the Legal Aid Commission of Los Angeles, and I'm here with the Coalition of Organizers and Advocates for Housing Justice. And first I would like to say that I echo the seven priorities on the list of, on the document that Amy has provided, and echo the comments that Amy and some of the other advocates have, have said today. First, I would like to say that I'm happy to see that there's inclusionary zoning in the public plan that's been posted on the website. I would ask that, I think other folks in the room and other activists would agree, that to the extent that the draft plan is subjected to further changes or any rollbacks of proposed strategies or goals or restoration of rights as they're outlined in the public plan, that the individuals, the agencies, the officials who are responsible for that be identified publicly, because I think, I think most people will probably agree that meaningful public engagement requires meaningful transparency and accountability. Second, I would like to emphasize the role of NIMBYism as it relates not only to housing production, but also as it relates to the preservation of rights. Consider, for instance, the role of NIMBYism, and for those who may not be familiar with the term, it is such a stance of not in my backyard. And the role of not in my backyardism in the criminalization of homelessness and the poor, specifically in the enactment of laws or practices that criminalize leaving anyone's vehicle, the seizing of homeless people's properties, the housing authorities' reliance on arrest records and arrest information, and the housing authorities' practice of relying on the, on the LAPD to search and violate the constitutional rights and the fair housing rights of public housing tenants. Third, it would be good for the community to see what increased enforcement looks like, and to the extent that the word enforcement is used in the document, it would be useful to have a clarification on what that means. As part of that, as part of the efforts to increase any enforcement or post-enforcement, the city should expand first aid protections and anti-harassment protections, which I believe are being considered now by the City Council. And lastly, I would like to emphasize, and Amy and other advocates have actually emphasized this point, with the need for the right of counsel and eviction proceedings. This is a tool that's been proven effective in other jurisdictions, as amazing to increasing displacement of low-income communities of color, families, people with disabilities, and other marginalized communities. I can say that as a legal attorney, I often see tenants with imperatories claims, but for whatever reason, whatever restrictions we may have, or lack of resources, we're unable to represent the many old individuals who come to our doors seeking assistance, oftentimes on the eve of an answer or on default. So I, the right of counsel and the funds that would go to make that happen effectively will be a very important tool to combat many forms of displacement, harassment practices, and discrimination in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Wen.
Good evening, thank you. My name is James Wen. I do serve on the Transgender Advice Council panel, receiving, I'll be representing myself. I want to start by saying that anywhere in the report where the word transgender is located, that we add the words gender non-binary people. Starting, finally, look at the goals for equal access, and starting with page two ninety-two, four point one. If you could add the word equal accessibility to the front end of that strategy, or that your complaint states that we're looking at architects and developers who have gender dysdesign, but I think if you put the word equal, that should take care of it. On section four point two, we're talking about the housing choice vouchers. It is imperative that with housing choice vouchers, although it is your strategy to globalize income, that there's a separate, that aside, specifically for transgender people. And I repeat that as imperative, because we may not necessarily be knowledge of discrimination by income, but potentially by our gender identification. That's why it's imperative. With regards to, continue on four point three, I'd like to add penalties for organizations not complying with state law and equal access, equal access policy. It kind of goes along with four point six, which I'll get to momentarily. Go to section four point five. It says train LAPD in fair housing laws and resources. I'm still trying to find the reason, perhaps we could also train LAPD. But I don't have one for that. Session four point six, enforcing fair housing protections for transgender, and again, just add the word gender non-binary people. Session four point seven, where it says strengthen the fair housing protections for immigrant immigrants. I'd like to really see including trans and gender non-binary immigrants. Reason why I want to make it that specific is that although immigrants covers all immigrants, oftentimes our communities are the forgotten community, and unless it's specifically stated, we are the forgotten community. So that's So that's why I want to include it. Going to page 296, the paragraph provides fund housing mobility counselors. I want to add that some of those fund housing mobility counselors need to be trans competent, gender non-binary competent employees. It should also clarify what is a housing mobility counselor, that's what will appear. And lastly, it only says for seniors and people with disabilities. Any transgender or non-disability, if you could also add transgender and gender non-binary people. On the standing enforcement of housing protections for transgender persons, again, everywhere where this is transgender and gender non-binary. I was really upset by the fact that it says the discrimination that many within this group have faced, have led. No, that's not the case. Many of this group that have faced, it's created an untenable situation. And transgender women deterred to illegal ways or incomes. They weren't led, it became an untenable situation, and that's the issue. And then, for all of these, you do address a little bit of the commission, but basically, we're looking for a pathway to have a voice on the housing commission. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Max Gonzalez.
James, did you say page 296 was in the record since 1996?
Yes, we're working on it.
Hello, good evening. My name is Max Gonzalez. I'm a trans, non-binary community member, activist, and currently the outreach coordinator for Translating Out Coalition. We're an international coalition of trans-led activists seeking to fight justice for the transgender community. My biggest problem today, and what I'm out here advocating for, is trans inclusivity in the 300-page draft, and also to decriminalize homeless communities. Because out of the 300 pages, there is under 15 pages that detail or talk about trans people at all, and zero pages that talk about non-binary people. Non-binary identities trace back thousands of years. We're part of the trans umbrella, we're part of the trans experience, and our identities are valid and ought to be protected as well. Transgender people face a monogam of unprecedented homelessness. Our people in our community are often kicked out of our houses, discriminated from jobs, fired from jobs, out of experience, both of those things as well. And there's no protections that are keeping employers, and there's obviously California legislations that are keeping employers in housing, for doing this stuff, but that's not being enforced. So our employers and our people that control our housing are not enforcing, the state, the government, the city is not enforcing when trans people are fired for being trans. When trans people are fired for being one minute late because their employer doesn't want to have to deal with their problems. When trans people, people that control their housing are firing them because they don't agree with their point of view or lifestyle. All of these things contribute to chronic homelessness in our community. And it's no secret that people of color have disproportionate ranges of homelessness and poverty, and so do trans people. But within the group of people of color, transgender, non-binary people face the highest risk of disproportionate poverty and homelessness. So while we're, I see LAPD kicking homeless people out of the skate row, telling people to pack up their clothes, throwing people's belongings away, violating the Fourth Amendment, and criminalizing people sleeping in their car, but I see no effort being made to house these people, to put these people in rehabilitation programs, the folks that deal with addiction. I don't see any effort being put into making sure that these people have three hots in the cot, making sure that these people have a place to stay and food to eat at the end of the day. And many of these people are members of the trans community, and that's why I'm out here today advocating for this. Because out of 300 pages, there are under 15 that talk about the trans community and zero that talk about non-binary identities, and that needs to change. We need reform, and we need it now. Quite honestly, I can't stand for another trans person to be murdered or to die because they don't have adequate housing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Camila Concepcion.
Hi, my name is Camila Concepcion. And like my colleague Max, I too work with Translating Out as a workforce peer support navigator. And echoing with Terry J, our first speaker of the night, said earlier today, it's kind of offensive, there are some parts of this report that were quite literally copied and pasted, probably under the impression that no one would notice. The statistics copied and pasted specifically say that nearly one-third of the transgender community reports having experienced homelessness at some point in their lives, and 12% report experiencing homelessness within the last year. That was first dated on page 75 and again copied and pasted on page 98. But as you can clearly see, 12% very much downplays the harsh reality currently facing, trans people currently face, as we've had speakers who have clearly experienced firsthand these issues. I've worked at the Translating Out Coalition for only a little bit over a month, and the eight clients that I have assisted in my time there, seven of them have not had to hear housing. Seven of them have been denied housing on several occasions, and have had to struggle day to day to find a place to live. And it is a harsh reality that, again, I think the statistical representation of this inaccessible, inaccessibly written, very academic, very, it's not accessible to the kind of people who need to read it, which I think is another, is perfect representation of why this auditorium is so empty today, because there is a denial of this kind of information to the people who need to know it most. On page 147, it explains one line that says transgender people experience domestic violence, and that domestic violence resources are not open to transgender individuals. On page 195, there's an entire page outlining domestic violence resources available through the city of Los Angeles, and guess what? Transgender people are not mentioned but one time. Though page 147 quite literally said that domestic violence resources are not open, and page 195 quite literally represents the fact that people, the reason they're not open is because they are not included in that conversation. And it clearly points to a very, very major misunderstanding of the intersectional struggles that trans, and transgender men, women, and gender nonconforming folks experience on a daily basis. In terms of the seven goals of this program, number four says that there is mandatory inclusionary zoning that would make sure that there's a percentage of affordable units. I think that that model of mandatory inclusion should be something that should be adopted and modeled to benefit trans people as well, because it should be mandatory to include us. Because the denial of our rights and our basic human ability to survive day to day is leading to so many disproportionate amounts of suffering that the city is neglecting and that the city is creating as a form of abuse. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edwin Millan.
Thank you. My name is Edwin Millan, and I work for the Ace of Promotion, however, I don't represent myself. My title there is Director of Self-Servicing Global Integration, therefore, I work with the company. And it's time to say that I see my transgender friends, gender nonconforming friends, my African-American friends, or Latino friends struggling with this issue. They are handed out. I'm also here to understand, and being part of the QI committee, that we need to stop that. And also, when I see whole flyers and any type of form that says, like, "you are acting QI friendly," I don't see that as something positive. I want to see ugly QI affirm. We're not here to please people, we're here to show how we are and express ourselves how we serve as human beings. We need also to stop, like my article reads in France said before, that banks, the developers, the realtors, making excessive amount of money and not sharing with the rest of the people that actually need a place to live. Furthermore, we need to raise the fines for landlords that aren't used to. We need to raise those, and we need to stop slapping the head because that's not working. I work for the largest organization that helps people with HIV in the world. We have over 100,000 people who care. And unfortunately, the ones that are not adherent, the ones that are suffering, are the ones that are homeless and happen to be the QI. So remember that when you go home, and you need to do your dedication, you need to make a difference with food, you don't have a place to live how you miss pay to one who are adhering to your dedication. It doesn't have a correlation against how you can, but it is. So please, bring yourself to the point, and be, and be fair to the residents, but then, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bambi Salcedo.
Buenas noches a todos y a todas. Good evening. So I just want to, well, my name is Bambi Salcedo, and I am part of the Translating Out Coalition, as you was mentioning earlier. The Translating Out Coalition is a national advocacy organization that is also providing services here in Los Angeles. What I want to talk about is really, you know, I want to echo what my colleagues have said, which was definitely well articulated. But I think that for us to understand, for those, for the people who are writing this plan, it's important that we understand the social issues that continue to keep trans people where we are within our society. And I think, you know, I have shared different reports, but I think that, I have shared different reports of information of that have been captured of the issues and needs of trans people. But I think what we need to really do is be intentional about what we write in this, in this report, or in this plan. It was mentioned earlier that this is sort of like a guide for our elected officials to sort of like vogue on. And what is going to be in this plan is going to dictate the outcome of the lives of trans people and gender nonconforming individuals. And there needs to be in this plan explicit language that talks about the specific needs, the specific housing needs of trans and gender nonconforming individuals. But in addition to that, there needs to be resource allocation, and this language needs to be included. There needs to be that a percentage of whatever it is, I don't know, like, what the budget is for housing, but I know it's millions and millions of dollars, that it's important that we understand that we, as trans people, are not begging for a right to be matched. We are actually demanding that we are acknowledged as individuals, as a community, and that we understand that we are part of this city. And that as such, we need to be acknowledged and we need to be housed, we need to be properly housed. And I want to also echo, you know, as it was mentioned earlier too, that, you know, we, as trans and gender nonconforming individuals, get a better simply for who we are. We get criminalized simply for who we are. When we're walking down the street, we get stopped by the police, we get harassed, not only by the police, but also from society as a whole. We walk down the street, we walk anywhere, we can't get turned back. And it's important that we understand how violent translate into the life and current people. And institutional violence is one of the things that dictates the outcomes of our people. And so, we have to understand that we cannot perpetrate the violence. And if this, if there's not a specific language, and if there's not explicit language about trans and gender nonconforming individuals, then we are contributing to the violence that trans people continue to experience in our society.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anna Cruz.
Good morning. My name is Anna Cruz. I'm here at the Power, I'm here on the Power.
Hello, my name is Anna Cruz, and I am a member of the Power.
Yo estoy sufriendo de esta locura. Yo vivo más que hasta la hora que yo estoy sufriendo de esta locura.
Currently, I am facing an eviction. I live in Mark Gardens. Fresh on Markist Garden.
Voy a contar una historia un día. Yo sufrí de violencia doméstica en mi esposo. Él te puso una deuda de 10 mil dólares. El año pasado, yo lo sacé del contrato y alguien sabía que yo estuviera sufriendo de violencia doméstica.
I'm going to share a story. I am a victim of domestic violence, and my spouse left a debt of $10,000. And he is also in the insurance contract.
La oficina de abogados nunca me dijo mi derecho que yo tenía como sufre de violencia doméstica.
Topps Housing never told me my rights as a victim of domestic violence.
En el contrato dijiste que cuando eres víctima de violencia, hay una ley que se llama Guaba. La oficina nunca me dijo ese derecho.
I'm the contract that says that there is a law called Guaba, and Amy never told me about that right.
Así vivió un año. El julio de este año, yo fui hablar con las funcionadoras. Ellas me consultaron la ley de Guaba. Apenas el julio me dieron protección.
Just in July, I stayed like that, and just in July was that the... The commissioners told me about that right.
Y aún así siguieron con la corte. Yo me mandaron el corte. El año pasado, yo pedí la corte. A mi lugar, a la mejor, hasta el último día, llegué a Cherry, y me lo sacaron. Yo tengo cuatro niños. Cuando yo saqué a mi hija del contrato, a mi la renta me sirvió un montón de viviendas.
I had a court case this Friday, and I lost the case. So I'm seeing if I am going to be getting evicted by insurance this Monday. I have four kids.
Yo tuve que sacar a mi hija del contrato. Mi hija está durmiendo en la calle. Para que me van a la mesa, tuve que sacarla porque el contrato no estaba documentado. Y tuve que sacar a mi hija del contrato, y mi hija está en la calle. Ella no tiene la calle.
I am undocumented. I have to take, I have to remove my daughter out of the contract. And my daughter currently is homeless, and she is sleeping out on the streets.
La oficina quiere que yo pague la suma de 20 mil dólares para dar mi vivienda. Mi oficina no tiene. Mi ingreso que yo se estuvo cada vez sosteniendo es porque mi casa mejor 202 de renta.
Housing has asked me to pay $20,000 so that I can stay there. And my income is $549,000, that is some assistance. And my rent is $802,000.
Yo he llegado a hablar con ellos, y yo quiero hacer un acuerdo. La deuda que tienen bien es por eso, es de, no es mío. Yo quiero pagar lo que es mío. Yo he hablado muchas veces, pero no tengo la cuenta, y ellos han negado.
I want to talk to them so we can reach an agreement. And I want to let them know that, that, that problem with finances is his problem, not mine.
Y aún así, porque la gente hace, aunque hay muchas personas, muchas mujeres están viviendo en viviendas públicas, estamos teniendo violencia doméstica, y la oficina no nos da. Y nosotros deberíamos, los chalecos nos protegen. Y hay muchos, abordamos a nuestros directores porque no sabemos nuestra ley que nosotros teníamos.
And there's a lot of women like me that are in situations like this that we are not being informed of our rights, and that's why a lot of the times, they stay with their peers.
Así que, ya no puedo escuchar así que ya, posiblemente yo mismo necesito fuera de mi vivienda. Hay a veces que están protegiendo los de Fuente, y a mí que yo, que haga. Están protegiendo los de Fuente, si es que estoy en una basurera, me quieren sacar a la calle. Yo creo que paren al Chevy porque uno, posiblemente salga fuera, y me hizo chiquito. No duelo fuera esperando, pero lo voy a sacar a la calle.
I want to thank you, and I also want to bring to your attention that a lot of the times, you guys are protecting criminals. And there are women like me that are suffering in domestic violence. And I have my son who is now worried that they're going to come and... And I have my son who is now worried that they're gonna come and evict us. And for that reason, he isn't able to sleep. So I just wanna put it in your minds again that possibly Monday, I will be homeless.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Our next speaker is Daisy Vegas.
I want you to have a story. Soy de la organización Power. Soy residente. Soy líder. Me duele mucho. I am a member of Power. I am a leader. I am, um, and I am a resident, and it hurts me a lot. Y líder.
And leader. Say it. She is a leader.
Este, saben que están haciendo una gara violación de los derechos humanos, tanto housing como HAD.
They are breaking the human rights, not only HAD, but housing as well.
Voy a explicar por qué. Están desalojando a nuestros ancianos. Están desalojando a nuestros hijos. Están desalojando a nuestros, a nuestros guillos primos que viven con nosotros.
I will explain why. They are evicting seniors, our children, our uncles, people that live with us.
Por las rentas altas. Hace como seis años, si no me equivoco, fuimos a Blatter HAD para que no subieran las rentas a las personas que no tenían documentos.
Because of the high rents. Six years ago, we went and we spoke with HAD for, um...
Like to increase the rent?
So that they won't increase the rent.
Esto es la consecuencia de muchos hogares que han sido desalojados y familias que han sido desalojadas.
This is the situation of a lot of houses and families. I have to do this.
Estas personas ya están en la calle, y se están tratando de resolver la cuestión HHH.
These people are now on the streets, and you guys are trying to resolve policy HHH.
Resolvámoslo. Ayudemos. No lo saquemos. No le dejamos a los padres que den la sugerencia de sacar a los, a nuestros familiares de nuestro contrato.
And so, um, and so, this is, let's talk about the landowners to victims people.
Ana es un símbolo de las viviendas públicas. Han sido violados sus derechos. Primero, con la violencia doméstica del Juaba. Segundo, la violencia doméstica que se hizo, basic the housing of the...
Ana is a victim of public housing, and also of her...
Violation of her rights. She says that she was a victim of the violations of her rights, including curvy housing? Exactly, but you're not doing the way she's saying it.
Y lo segundo es que aparte de esto, housing ha tenido una persecución con ella.
The second part is that housing has been having a prosecution with her.
Para desalojarla. Nos mintieron.
To evict her. They are lying.
Y la oficina no quieren que vamos a llegar a un arreglo. Fuimos a court, quieren que vamos a llegar a un arreglo. Ahora dicen que HAD es el que tiene que decidir si Ana se queda o no. Yo quiero saber esto.
The commissioners told us that we were gonna reach an agreement.
Que HAD es el que dice si se decide que Ana se quiere o no.
And that none is the one that is gonna decide whether they're adding his pay or not.
Son dieciocho mil dólares que dicen que tiene que dárselo a sacar.
It is eighteen thousand dollars that they are saying that they need to, that she needs to, that needs to be given to her.
Pero quién dice? ¿A dónde está el dinero? ¿El señor Montiel se llevó a la bolsa?
But we're saying, where is the money that Montiel took? He is the director of housing.
Quiero saber yo, que no puede perdonar o llegar a un arreglo de pago. Ana no tenía a pagar.
I want you to know that Ana is not denying pain.
Y así hay muchas personas en housing. Así hay muchas personas que están violando sus derechos. Y también compran terrenos con veneno, por favor.
And this is the situation of a lot of people in housing and who are being put in properties with poison.
Si no son organizaciones como las que están aquí abogando por diferentes campos y por diferentes derechos, no se dan cuenta o lo ignoran. Nuestro hermano African American es grande y legal.
If there was an organization such as these that are right here... Our brothers African American would be poisoned.
Por favor, enfóquense en nosotros. Trase.
Please focus on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alexandra Magallón.
My name is Alexandra Magallón, and I'm an advocate for the Transatlantic Coalition under Workforce Development. I want to bring up to the attention of this assessment or whatever it is that you're doing that includes transgender and gender non-binary people in your formula, because it's not, they're not being included in this conversation. I think it's also imperative that we include transgender and gender non-binary people to the table, because a lot of the times, we are not being included to the table where the plans are being drafted. So if you are wanting to have a conversation, they seek us. We are here, and we are here to stay. So thank you for that. I also ask that funds be allocated for the transgender and nonconforming or non-binary people, because a lot of these organizations that are assisting or helping or saying that they're here for shelter, saying that they're here for housing, are faith-based organizations. And honestly, that is the last person who I want assisting me, because I am that person that they come down to help. I am that person that they push away. I am the person that they tell me that I'm no longer, I'm not welcome in their churches. So how am I even feel safe in a place where this faith-based organization is doing the leading in housing and shelter? We need to put funds for transgender, nonconforming housing and shelter specifically, because a lot of these places are sex segregated. We need to understand that the sex segregated facility is not going to aid us or assist us in any way, because it is a sex segregated facility. They are not thinking of the transgender and gender non-binary people in mind. I brought this up with a few different organizations, which I have clients. Many of them are homeless, and I bring the same thing up. And I say, when are our clients gonna be able to access your facility? And a lot of the times, they are being told that they are not able to access the facility because they want things to be safe for everyone, for everyone to get along. That is not acceptable. I need the safe space to be, because as a transgender woman that has been homeless three times already, it is very difficult for even me as an advocate to access these type of facilities. And if I didn't access it, and I know how to navigate the system, how are my brothers and sisters able to access these type of facilities? I think it's imperative that we understand why we have so many transgender, nonconforming people or non-binary people coming into the Los Angeles area. What you don't understand, as Los Angeles knows, is that you, as a trans and gender non-binary person, are not safe in the entire United States. I come from Washington State. I came here to better understand how I can be an advocate and an activist for my community, because I was in Red in Washington when they were trying to pass the rest of the law. You do not understand what that means, that transgender person coming from a different state, having to leave everything, to have to go to a place to feel safe, like California. And if Los Angeles is gonna be the model of that, best believe that everyone that is transgender, non-binary is gonna come here whatever way they can to find that sanctuary. It is imperative that as Los Angeles knows, because I do include myself as one now, because I do pay taxes like everybody else, that we think of these people that are coming into this place, that are using this space as a sanctuary, and they are now homeless. That we think of those people, that we don't forget that as Los Angeles knows, yes, we are lucky, but a lot of people are not lucky when they're coming from different states. And that we think of that, and that we serve a model, and that we are the model that we are. Thank you very much.
I want to add something, but before we go on, I really want for this to be on the record. I don't know if you can turn that thing on. Okay, cool. Um, so, you know, I think it's important that we understand linguistic justice. You know what I mean? And I know, if we really, if we really believe in social justice, I think that stories that we hear from people are not well captured. And so, we have to give the opportunity for people to express themselves as they are, however, without having the barrier of the language. And I think people need to express themselves like that, and that needs to be captured, however. So multiple languages need to be put into that system, whatever it is, so that people are able to express and really capture the feelings and the issues that people are going. Because things get lost into translation. And I think we need to figure out a better way to really understand the core issues and needs and the feelings that people have, because they're, they're the lives of people that we're talking about.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Haywood.
Hi, my name is Naomi Haywood. I'm with the National African American Parent Union. And I was told that we can put out some complaints today on the Assessment Fair Housing Draft. First of all, in the plan, it says that the housing authorities coordinators came out to the communities and talked to all of the residents in the communities, or a lot of residents in the communities, about this draft. That was a lie. What they did introduce was called the New Vision Plan. And after addressing Mr. Eric Brown regarding the New Vision Plan four months later, he said it actually was programmed. And he never heard of the Assessment of the Fair Housing Plan. It was a federal issue and not housing authority issue, showing a lack of engagement that he gave in the community. The Assessment Fair Housing, the Assessment of Fair Housing Draft Plan is an extension of our fundamentally furthering Fair Housing Regulation of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which primarily focused is ending segregation, discrimination, separation, poverty, and racial bias, as well as integration in Black communities. This was the original Fair Housing Act, which these two are birthed from. That was never done. Segregation and discrimination and racism was birthed out of the Fair Housing Act instead of ending them under the Fair Housing Act. The housing authority never adopted the act and did exactly the opposite. The Fair Housing Act hasn't been practiced since it passed in 1968. As a matter of fact, everything that the act was supposed to end was actually practiced by the housing authority. This new plan ushers in a new era of poverty, segregation, discriminate, and discrimination under the umbrella of racism. Starting with the housing authority coordinator, who claimed he worked with all of the 21 public housing developments, giving them a plethora of information on the plan, when indeed, that was not the truth. On August 24, 2017, in the presence of Mr. Cloud of Congressman Maxine Waters' office, Mr. Eric Brown asked if there were any questions on the New Vision Plan, which is what he's been working with the communities on for the last nine months. He was asked by the National African American Parent Union if the New Vision Plan and the Assessment of Fair Housing Draft were the same plan. His response was, "I do not know what the Assessment of the Fair Housing Plan is. That's a federal issue." He went on to say that the New Vision Plan was really a, not a plan, a program. He introduced it into the communities. One of the attributes of the Assessment Plan is to share information widely with all the communities. However, the Avalon Garden community, Morbison community, and Nixon Garden communities know nothing about Assessment Fair Housing Plan. Clearly, separation, segregation, and discrimination is practiced here. First of all, I work with all of these communities mentioned on this, on this plan, on this paper. And I hear the plight of all of the people. I'm African American. I'm sure you can see that. So I understand what it is to be discriminated against. I understand what it is to have an arrow, a target on your back. I understand what it is to have doors slammed in your face and be spit at. I understand what it is to be hurt and thrown out simply because of who you are. We need the housing authority to start stepping on the foundation of the Fair Housing Act, the original Fair Housing Act, not this furthering the original Fair Housing Act to get rid of discrimination, to get rid of segregation, racism, and all of that in these new communities that they're building. Because they're building these communities and pushing people in the communities out. And we're already taking the clums that started on my paper. And who push us out of our communities. Where do we go? There's nowhere to go. There's nowhere left to go. We need you to stop acting like you don't see us. We're not invisible. We need you to stop acting like you don't see and fix our communities like you're doing, making them into middle class communities that they're telling us because they're middle class. You can't go. You and all of the diverse communities are no longer welcome in the poorest community yet, Alex.
Our last speaker of the evening is Ms. Foster.
It's eight o'clock. Hello, everyone. Excuse my appearance. I just got back from a medical mission trip to Guatemala that put a landlord who was behind schedule, even parked behind schedule. So this is my work outfit, because I'm a working landlord. Despite all the bitterness and anger that is spewed out at landlords, some of us are actually doing something. Some of us are actually working, and some of us actually care. I'm very disappointed in the, um, the plan that was put out. I read it some time ago before I left on my medical mission trip. And I wasn't sure if I was gonna come here tonight, but here I am. I find that the plan does what government always does. It pits one protected class against another. To someone that has not done their job. I am an African American woman. I'm a person of color. I am a female. I am a small business owner. I'm supposed to be a protected class too. So why would you write all of this nonsense to make my sister think that I'm her enemy? I was in McDonald's just the other day, hilly, having coffee from my mosquito bites in Guatemala. And I was having the liveliest conversation with an elderly man. And so I told him what I did. I go, "No, I'm the landlord." He says, "Oh, you're my enemy." I'm not your enemy. I'm one of the people here that is out advocating for you, that is working hard to try and do my part and give back. You have no idea of the personal sacrifices that I have made to even be in the position to reach back and try and help someone. So when I hear you saying that the landlord is the enemy, and that we're all getting rich... So when I hear you saying that the landlord is the enemy and that we're all getting rich, that's a, that's a load of crap. We don't own anything. We're on our way to ownership. It takes about 30 to 40 years to really own something. And the moment that you don't do what you're supposed to do, the bank will come and take it away from you. But there is not one agency that would help a landlord. And I commend all the agencies that are out there working because we need agencies. But we don't need you to try and crucify me. You should be trying to work with me to help solve problems. And I just want to tell you that landlords are not discriminating against tenants that have Section 8 vouchers. Because I just placed eight homeless veterans this past year. But I did it in the county of Los Angeles as opposed to the city of Los Angeles. Your plan fails to address systemic problems, which makes it unsustainable to do business with the Housing Authority of the city of Los Angeles. That's the problem. There, Mr. Guthrie sitting over there, he's turned his head now. But I want to tell you that I advocated for a homeless veteran to get housing through the city of Los Angeles recently. This person almost fell through the cracks, but for my grace. And I had held a unit for about three months. They didn't pay me a holding fee. Nobody paid any rent. Oh, is that a time card? I think it's time for me to shut up. I'm sorry. There's a lot to say. But I put together a 13-page memorandum that was submitted and none of the issues in that memorandum are addressed in your plan because that kind of stuff is just thrown under the rug. I am not your enemy. I know it's my time. I shut up and everything and I'm technically the enemy, but I want to say that I am not. Because I have worked hard, I have placed people, and I have been spit on. And, you know, I feel like the chief of police in Texas, when the officers got shot randomly, the police officers, and he just came, he said, "You're putting too much of a on us. You want us to be social workers." I can't do everything. And I can't take care of everybody. I can do what I can, but you can't crucify me and deny my efforts and then make me the bad guy because government is not doing their job. I would challenge government. You really, put your money where your mouth is. The next time a building goes up for sale, buy it. The next time a multi-union, multi-union building is up for sale, why don't you buy it? Then you can control how much the rent is. And if you're willing, if you're willing to do that and then rent below market rent, then you're doing something. But don't think that I don't care. Don't think that I'm not trying to give back or do my part. I didn't know what prepared speed or anything like that because I didn't even know I was coming. But there are serious things. I mean, developers get incentives for building affordable housing. But every time I get a Section 8 tenant, I pick a pickup, I rent below market rent. I'm asked to do that. I don't get anything for that. And then I'm stuck under rent control. We should be getting something. I mean, you want to have landlords work with you. They should be getting something to help encourage them to, 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 to... Because we create affordable housing every day, to be honest. But as I said, there are systemic problems within the city of Los Angeles Housing Authority, which makes it unsustainable to do business with them. They need to take a look at themselves and then come back to the table and try and see how they can work with landlords to win them that on their side, their side. Because they, it's a foul taste in the mouth of landlords as to why they're not doing business with them and why they're not accepting Section 8 vouchers through the city of Los Angeles. Not a rejection of the applicant, it's a rejection of the institution that they're required to do business with and where they help that applicant. Again, on the issue of legal aid. And I'm not saying that, that legal aid is not needed. But sometimes I might need legal aid. You know, I don't have money running out of my butt, but a disentho franchise person who showed up in Florida with three attorneys and waged war against me and dragged out a case where a person hasn't paid their rent. What am I supposed to do if somebody's not paying their rent? I don't, I can't take care of people that are not paying their rent. I don't want to go to work because I have to. If I don't, it's because I have to.
Ms. Foster, I'm going to have to ask you to...
I know, I need to shut up.
...finish. I think we've added one more speaker, so thank you. Claudia, is Bill going to speak? Is Bill speaking?
I couldn't find him.
Okay. All right, Bill is definitely our last speaker of the evening.
My name is Bill Frislucky. I'm the executive director of Power People Organization for West Side Renewal. We organize with low-income tenants in Venice, the West Side, and also in the San Fernando Valley, in the Pointe. Specifically, in 246 units of project-based Section 8 housing in Venice, known as Rizzi Bahar Holiday Events, the Marcus Garden Public Housing Community in Port City, and the San Fernando Garden Public Housing Community in Pointe. I just want to emphasize some more points from our coalition's suggestions on the document. First, I want to reiterate the source of income protections, including Section 8. Venice used to be a place with a lot of Section 8 voucher holders and there are fewer and fewer places in Venice and where anywhere in the West Side where Section 8 voucher holders can live, simply because landlords won't even do business with the program. We need to guarantee that folks, especially in gender非区域, where people are being pushed out. Sometimes, that's one of the ways that we can keep the community in place. And we're losing too many of folks that are going out to land after that we can't keep folks in housing that's affordable to them in the community where they're from. We need to stop criminalizing people without housing. Venice, again, is an example where we've seen part of much of this, from sweeps on the beach to the bid program where the banners of the business improvement district were bragging that their private enforcement, that they were going to hire, were going to clear homeless people off the beach, to laws that outlaw the parking of oversized vehicles, which specifically targeted the RVs and the campers where house people were living after they'd been displaced from housing vests. We need to stop all of these types of practices that are designed to get homeless out of our community and instead serve them and then house them. The reasonable accommodations at the Housing Authority. We need the Housing Authority to establish rules that violations that were not related to, that were related to a person's disabilities should first be met with a reasonable accommodation. And they should demonstrate that no reasonable accommodation could be met before an unlawful detainer takes place or people are removed from the program. Also, the use of publicly owned land for affordable housing. I've been talking to folks at LAUSB and the United Futures of Los Angeles for a decade and a half about this idea, using school sites to build affordable housing. I don't know how seriously the city has ever reciprocated that idea and engaged with them. They're educators. They don't build affordable housing. Someone's got to go explain to them how we can make this happen. It's just one of the many examples of ways that we could use public land to do the construction of public housing, especially in areas where we get it the most where folks are being displaced. And then one last overarching comment. The document is very short on specific policies and programs for the Housing Authority in particular. And as we heard, the Housing Authority in February, this commissioners hearing, formally and publicly launched their 25-year vision plan. It seems insane that the 25-year vision plan would move forward without fully integrating our best and most ambitious ideas for fair housing into it. So there can be this disconnect. There needs to be more specificity in this plan and that needs to be in alignment with the Housing Authority's vision plan, their actual long-term strategic plan that they're going to work on. I could say a lot more about that. One last thing, obviously, our organization, our organization is the one working with that group. We've heard from before. I want to reiterate, there are 4,000 individuals and their families in federally subsidized housing in this city. We don't know how many families are taking their undocumented family members off their contracts as they can't afford to keep them on because of the appropriated rents. We do not know how many abuse victims are continuing to live with their abuser because they literally can't afford to get them out of the house. This, you can't call it fair housing if single mothers, undocumented immigrants, and domestic abuse survivors cannot be safely out. That's not fair housing. We need to do something about that.
We thank you all for coming tonight. And for those of you that didn't get a chance to speak, please submit written comments to us. And those of you that did speak that did not get to cover all of the issues that you wish you had time to do, please send supplemental comments to us that we can incorporate into the draft and I will hand it off to Claudia to close us out.
Okay, thank you again for being here and staying through eight, a little bit past eight o'clock. I just want to remind you of the timeline for the Assessment of Fair Housing Plan to be adopted. The next big meeting that we're having is at the Housing Committee on September 27. That would be another opportunity for you to provide a public comment in front of the council members. We have also a placeholder for October 11, when we are going to be presenting the close to final, actually, it should be the final draft before it goes to city council. We have a date of October 13 as a placeholder so that this is going to be approved by the city council. In addition to that, as you saw in the timeline before, concurrently, this plan is going to go before the Housing Authority's Board of Commissioners. We've already presented on this plan in the month of July, I believe. Late July is when we presented to them. We gave a very brief overview. And so, please, you have until the 29th of September to submit your public comments. You can email us. Please visit our website. It's cityoflafarehousing.org. And subscribe to that and we'll be able, and we are going to upload the maps and also this PowerPoint presentation for you. Thank you very much. I want to thank our colleagues at the Housing Authority and I want to thank the staff at HST and our consultants for working really hard and all the translators.
Could you tell me what number this draft is filed under?
I believe it's 160... Yes. We will be putting the transmitter there for your, we'll put it on the website as well.
What time are all of those meetings on?
I'm sorry. For the Housing Committee, it's at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, September 27. And on October 11, it will also be at 1:00 PM. And for the city council meeting, regular, regular city council meeting is at 10:00 AM. Also, I will be presenting and providing an overview of this in front of the Affordable Housing Commission next Wednesday at noon. Okay, thank you.